The meeting is called to order at 6:37 PM. Please rise in the, um, the clear grace of blessing of allegiance. That's not my first time.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Bradstreet, the Director of Communications for the District and the Clerk pro tem for this meeting. The July 15th, 2025 organizational and regular meeting is called to order. Dr. Scott Wilson received his oath of office at the Bay Trail Temporary District Office on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And re-elected Board Member Dr. Emily Roberts received her oath of office at the Bay Trail Temporary District Office on Wednesday, July 9th, 2025. Congratulations to both of you and welcome to Scott. At this time, we have the election for the Board Officers. Nominations will be received for the President and Vice President. Roberts' Rules of Orders does not require a second to the motion, but if one of the Board Members wishes to second the motion as a show of support, it will be accepted. Then after the nominations are closed, we will take the vote. The meeting is now open for nominations for the Office of Board President for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any nominations, Board Members? Krista?
I would like to nominate Dr. Aaliyah Elamenterna for President. I, um, I believe she's committed to the Board. She has a wonderful and different perspective on many issues that I would never even think of. And she can impart these words of knowledge and experience very eloquently. And that's why I want you to be President.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations and we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Congratulations, Aaliyah. We will now have you take your oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support-
I do solemnly swear that I will support-
-the Constitution of the United States of America-
The Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution of the State of New York-
And the Constitution of the State of New York-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
I will faithfully discharge-
-the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education-
The duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education-
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my abilities-
In the Penfield Central School District according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will now open the nominations for the Office of Vice President for the 2025-26 school year. Are there any nominations, Board Members?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Krista Khan. Krista, as a Vice President, um, part of your responsibilities are really to be a sounding board, to be a good listener, to help, um, keep things focused and going in the right direction. But what I value the most about you as a Board Member is your ability to really listen to all sides that are coming to the table, um, whether it's a dissenting viewpoint or voice. Um, you really value that and I think that, um, will make you such a great, um, Vice President.
I second that. Did you hear that? I second that.
Thank you, I got it. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations and we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Congratulations, Krista.
Thank you.
We will now administer the oath to you.
I do solemnly swear- I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution of the State of New York-
And the Constitution of the State of New York-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education-
Of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education-
In the Penfield Central School District-
In the Penfield Central School District-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I will now turn the meeting over to our new Board President, Aaliyah.
So am I to just start regular business or do I have to call? I don't have to call anything next? It's a regular business. So, the Board approved, uh, the July 15th, 2025 Agenda as submitted. May I have a motion in a second that the Agenda of July 15th, 2025 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I have a motion, um, made in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
No questions or comments?
Questions, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor? None opposed? Alrighty. May I please have a motion in a second that the Board approves the following consent Agenda? We did? Okay, it's here twice, I apologize. Okay. Yes. Yeah, so is that the, um, public hearing?
Yep.
Yes, okay. So, this hearing- This is real in depth, okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the District's Emergency Response Plan. There will be a period for public comments following the presentation. Um, Dr. Potter to introduce, oh.
Good evening. We have our Director for Buildings and Grounds, Facilities and Grounds, Mr. George English here. George works very closely with our security work in our district. And in partnership, we have George sharing our District Emergency Response Plan. Um, we've opened up the public hearing. He will present the details of our emergency response plan and then we'll turn it back over to our President.
Good evening. So, this is, uh, very important for our district. Hopefully, we don't have to put it into place, but if we do, we, uh, wanna be prepared and so that's why this is very important. So, um, it's also important because the state says we have to do it. So, it's required by New York State Commissioner Regulation 155.17. It's also required by the Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, the SAVE Law. Both laws set a minimum requirement of a district-wide safety plan and building-level emergency response plans. Plans which include policies and procedures relating to responding to certain threats. Uh, the district-wide school safety plan is a public document that we post on our district website. Uh, it's also shared with New York State Police, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and the Brighton Police Department. Uh, and it's provided to SED per regulation and education law. And then we also have building-level emergency response plans and those are confidential. Those are held much tighter and closer. Uh, and we actually, when we distribute those, we have a distribution plan. They, they go to those that need it and district leadership. But if we do pass those out, we have a distribution record as well. So, we keep those very tight because we don't want somebody that's looking to harm us to know how we're gonna respond and deal with it. Um, and then I skipped bullet two, but, uh, our Safety and Security Coordinator works with our building-level teams to develop that plan. And, you know, that plan's already developed, but each year it's reviewed. It's reviewed, uh, late in the summer. Depending on when guidelines come from the state. We've already got them this year, so we're, we're in good shape. Uh, and so they'll be doing that fairly soon. Our building-level emergency response plans, uh, they cover building-specific hazards like a weather-related issue, uh, building-specific situational responses, uh, facility-related emergencies like a gas leak, uh, medical emergencies, transportation emergencies. And then they also cover crime scene protection. You know, hopefully that's not needed, but that guideline is provided. And then relocation and reunification if that becomes necessary. And then the district-wide school safety plan, uh, it covers all hazard. It's, but again, like I said, that's more general and it's opened and provided to everybody on our website. It has general information and guidelines. It focuses on risk reduction, prevention, and intervention as well as preparedness. It provides general response procedures and recovery guidelines. It also outlines the necessity of the building-level emergency response plans and provides emergency closing and early dismissal instructions. The district-wide school safety plan must be reviewed by the District Health and Safety Committee, which it was at our May meeting. And that committee recommended this be brought to the Board, which we're doing tonight. Uh, which, and it requires a public hearing, which we're doing, uh, here at our meeting this evening. The public hearing must take place on a yearly basis and allow for 30 days for comment. Seems like a lot, but after the 30 days, the Board adopts the plan and the plan is to be adopted by the 1st of September. So, that's why we do it now. And in our August meeting, you can adopt it and we're all on schedule. The only change really this year to our district-wide, uh, safety plan involves, uh, New York State's emergency response terms. Shelter in place now is shelter in place slash shelter. Maybe transitioning just to shelter. I'm not, we don't know for sure. Hold in place, again, hold in place slash hold. Evacuation's the same. Lockout has changed, that's now secure lockout. And lockdown is still the same. The diagram that you see there on the slide will be what we post in our classrooms. It is a little fancier and nicer looking than the old one, but, um, so, but all- nothing's changed as far as the verbiage down below, each, each category. It all, all is the same. It's just, I don't know. Not, not sure why, but we knew last year that this was coming and, um, not sure why they decided to update it, but, um, anyways, that, that's really all I have for this tonight. Any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have a quick question and a comment. First of all, thank you, cuz I know how much time and energy you put into this every single year. Um, so we appreciate that. Reunification and relocation, and I should know this as a parent, but parents do not know where, what building is designated as the relocation building prior to an event, do they?
No.
Not always. Um, it depends on the situation. In some instances, we do advertise where the-
Okay.
You know, like for, like a gas leak, most likely elementary school is gonna come to the high school. But it really isn't always set because we're not sure-
What the situation is.
What the situation will be. And, you know, we, we've talked to Brown Cough Church as possibly a location in case there's a threat that includes all of our campuses.
And really, I think the point around that is the secure location for students and faculty. So if there is a threat and on one of our district campuses, we should have a secure location for us to transition to.
Right.
So if that information were communicated, that means that we're compromising then that safe location. So to the point around a gas leak or something like that where there's, um, some type of mechanical or operational issue, but if it's a safety component, we really wouldn't wanna share those details.
Right, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for your assist.
Anyone else?
Just another comment. I've had a chance to work with George all last year and, uh, just wanna thank you. You do an incredible job. You're very detailed and very thorough and-
Thank you.
-the community, um, speaking for the community on this. We appreciate all the work you do. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, if anyone else would like to-
Yes, yes. I just have one more comment and I just wanna echo, um, the messages that have been shared by the Board. I absolutely appreciate all of George's support and leadership in our district around this work. I also joined Patrick as part of the District's Health and Safety Team. And each time we come together and we're reviewing the district protocols and processes, George has a very nice way of articulating and supporting and leading this for our district. I'd also like to add, in his absence tonight, Mr. Ted Wilson, who is our District Safety and Security Coordinator, um, just also the work that he did with building principals at the close of the school year and helping to review the process with families and their teams. Um, and the work that you'll do in partnership around the building-level emergency response plans. So, thank you for everything that you do, George, for our district.
Thank you.
If anyone-
Thank you, George.
This is actually less stressful than the Health and Safety Committee.
Thank you. So, um, now I will say if anyone in the audience would like to come and speak specifically regarding the emergency response plan, they may do so now. Additionally, residents who wish to comment on the plan may email the District Clerk Lynn Scott by August 14th, 2025. So, no one's coming up? Okay, at this time, the hearing is closed at 6:57 PM.
Now we're moving on to Superintendent Reports?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. And I just have one quick update report to share with everyone tonight. Um, and really, it's just to tell the Board that we will be having our students join us. We have our student representatives, our ex-officio student Board members. So, effective July 1st, New York State School Districts with a high school will be required to include at least one ex-officio student member on their school board. I'm actually happy to announce that we've always had a student representative since I've been a part of this Penfield Central School District. However, given these, uh, new regulations from our Governor, um, we invited a process this year. For the first time, there was an actual process that we engaged in to identify students. And I'm also happy to announce that this process allowed us to consider inviting a 10th grader, an 11th grader, and a 12th grader to join us for next year. Um, so this process began by having our Principal of Penfield High School, Mrs. Leanna Watt, make some announcements on the morning show this spring and shared the information about the role and the opportunity for students to be able to join. There was also a process that included student interviews. So, Principal Watt and our Director for Student Engagement and Cultural Relations, Mrs. Mustafa George, um, they engaged in the first round of interviews. The second round of interviews, I joined with our past student rep, Helen Broikus. So, we participated in round two. And we were so excited to speak with the students. It was great because Helen was able to give the perspective and share her insight in the role. Um, and it was a beautiful handoff from her to them. And, uh, we will be inviting the three students and an alternate. So the alternate, we decided to have in the event that one of our students wasn't able to join, we would make sure that we still had the representation of all three to come forward. What was really nice also is all four of the students, including the alternate, attended one of our elementary schools. So each one has that perspective from the elementary schools. And so this is a lot of information on this slide, so I'm not going to read it all to you. However, we wanted to be very clear around what the job description was, their responsibilities as student, uh, members for the Board, and the requirement. And so this process for them helped to outline what exactly the expectations were for the role and more importantly, how they would see themselves showing up in it. Um, and then lastly, these are the names of our four students. So excitedly, we will be inviting in September Juliana Castanza, who is a 10th grader, Liam Myrna, who is an 11th grader, Aiden Elliott, a 12th grader, and Lila Shank, who is our alternate, which is an 11th grader. And tomorrow morning, they will all be joining me because Monroe County School Boards Association will be giving a training for our students across the region. And so the kids will be joining me for a governance opportunity to learn about their role and responsibility to join us on the Board. So, I just wanted to make sure that you had that update and, um, join me in welcoming our students for the fall as they become Board Members, student Board Members. And that's it for me and I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Great, thanks, Dr. Potter. Uh, congratulations to Dr. Wilson and our new officers. Uh, look forward to a great year together. So tonight is the reorganizational meeting. Uh, it's the meeting where we set all of the officers' responsibilities, duties, responsibilities. It really sets the table for the school year. As you are aware, every school year is different. We operate in a fiscal year, we have different Board Officers every year. So it really sets the stage for the next 12 months. So on your agenda for this evening, uh, the first of which is those reorganizational items. I think there are 50 or thereabouts. It can be overwhelming at first, but there's not a lot of variance year to year. Most of the things on there are generally the same, um, just some additions, deletions with personnel as people come and go and join different, um, committees and take on different responsibilities. Additionally, tonight with, you know, the project kind of winding down, at least at Phase 1 at the new garage, we have capital project change orders. We have some big credits on there this evening, things that didn't come to fruition or things that we changed over time. We have a design contract with our district architect for pre-referendum project services, so I'll talk about that, uh, a little more in a moment. Commissioning services for Phase 3 is, uh, commissioning is required by the State Education Department, um, Office of Facilities Planning. So, we awarded Phase 3 bids a couple of months ago, uh, for the current capital project. And what commissioning is, is this exercise that our engineers have to go through to make sure that all of our systems are compatible, efficient, sustainable. It's a little bit of an unfunded mandate. It's things that we, you know, kind of are aware of anyway, but it's this extra hoop that we now have to jump through. And because it's over $20,000, we have to, you know, in accordance with our procurement policy, have the Board of Education approve it. The intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County is based on a grant that we won. So the county this year in their budget allocated money for composting services for schools. So along with, um, Fairport, West Rondecoy, and maybe just us, maybe the three of us, we, uh, won the grant. So what this is going to allow us to do is start a pilot program for composting here at Penfield High School. So we're gonna partner with a local, um, group. The county's gonna pay 50% of the costs, we're gonna pay 50% of the costs. The intermunicipal agreement just dictates the terms of that grant award. RASHP, so, um, RASH is the Rochester Area School Health Plan. That's the consortium that we, um, as a school district are a part of with the Monroe 1 and Monroe 2 school districts, uh, and the surrounding area. Uh, this is just a restated amendment, amended bylaws, um, to participate in that consortium. The changes are in your packet, they're pretty minimal, there's not a lot there. Um, if there are any further questions, we can go into it. And then finally, uh, we have to approve the school physician contract. So the school physician is appointed up at the reorganizational items, but then because his contract is more than $20,000, we separately approve that, uh, at the Board level. So, um, going back to that pre-referendum design services contract, over the course of the last, I mean, really six or seven, eight months now, even going back at the end of 2024, uh, we've been internally meeting, uh, about facilities needs. It feels like yesterday, but our last capital project approval was 2021. So, you know, it's been a couple of years, we've had a building condition survey since then. We've had different needs, wants, um, emerge. So, we've been working internally to identify what that scope could look like. We've met with Facilities Committee, we've brought in our building principals, we've brought in our department managers, uh, and obviously working with our construction managers and architects to see what that could look like and then also bringing in our municipal advisors to better understand what the cost, um, scenario could be. So what we're hoping to do at our August 19th Board meeting is bring the Board of Education a tentative scope. So a list of items, things that we wanna work on by building, what the anticipated cost could be for that work, and then an associated timeline for the project. Uh, if that sounds good in August, by September, we could have the Board of Education actually approve, um, the scope of work. And that would start kind of a 90-day process where we go through the environmental quality review, we have public information sessions, uh, we would have a community referendum, a community vote in December, uh, on a potential capital project. So a lot of steps have to take place before that, but that's kind of the roadmap that we've outlined internally. And then again, because these things are slow, um, you know, we wouldn't break ground on this project until summer of 2027. So if we had community approval in December, take six months or so to go through the really, um, dedicated design phase to submit all the, the drawings to the State Education Department, and then another six months or so to get approval, and then another two months or so to bid the work properly and award the work. So hopefully, if all, you know, things go well, we would be able to award these contracts, uh, in spring of '27 and break ground in summer of '27. But a lot of work to do before then. And the contract with our architect is just for all the pre-referendum services that they've had to do. They've put together a lot of, uh, you know, renderings and working on a ability. It's been an intensive process, sometimes, uh, you know, a little bit of a exercise, but always interesting, always entertaining. I won't go too much into the scope tonight because we'll talk about it, but it's really a mixture of building condition survey things, um, so nuts and bolts type of things, boilers, roofs, doors, um, some security things that were identified in our security advisory committee that we, uh, had this past spring. Some things that emerged in the current capital project that we would have liked to do, but we either couldn't afford or they weren't in the initial scope. And then finally, just things that we've identified internally in the last two years or so that we would like to see come to fruition in the next five years or so. So plenty more to come, but I wanted to explain that contract and begin to socialize publicly this idea of project planning.
I'd also like to add that this is a very collaborative process. So in addition to us meeting, like Dan referenced, monthly, right? We also include the voices of our building principals so that they can also share some of the things that may have emerged in their buildings that they want us to be paying attention to. So the process is really, as I referenced, collaborative, but it's, it's a very intensive process. So I do look forward to being able to share more with the board and the community around what's been done. And then also the credit to Dan and to George because they have such an in-depth understanding and knowledge of the operations of our district and the facilities of our district to make sure that we're paying attention to all of the things to care and keep our district moving in the direction that we needed, we needed to. So I just want to make sure that there's clarity around how collaborative this process is.
Oh, board discussion, yes. Board members, any questions, questions or comments?
I just, I have a comment. I just want to echo what Dr. Potter said. Dr. Driffl, you and George English, I, I don't know what the district will do without y'all and how well you work together and how you keep moving our district forward and making sure that we are safe and that we are compliant and that we are fiscally responsible. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I'm glad you're the one doing this. And I did see you chuckle about the, the exercise that the, you know. Yeah, I want to know more about that. Not now, not now, but I'm intrigued, yeah. Does it involve jumping through hoops? Anyway, no. Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Driffl.
You're welcome.
And George English.
No, we're good. We're in public comments?
Yeah, that's I, I. I was confused. So the resolve, the, it doesn't ask me to do a motion, but is, um. So can I have a motion in a second? That the, I thought we did all that first, but no. That the above organizational items 6A1 through 6A50 be approved for the 2025, 2026 school year?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All, all approved, none opposed? Yeah, when she, I, I got confused because you said, and 2A, so that's today.
Yeah, I read the name.
We did that already. Yes. So now we move to public comments. And we don't have any public comments. Okay. So then next, we go to the change orders, change. Am I supposed to ask for like a motion? May I please, okay. May I please have a motion in a second for the change orders as described above to be approved? Or as described to be approved, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Question or comments? All in favor? I feel like that was guy damn sorry. Was it supposed to say, okay, so all in favor, none opposed, okay. May I please have a motion in a second that the pre- form contract be approved?
Oh, so moved. I raised my hand.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed, okay. May I please have a motion in a second that the Phase Three commissioning proposal be approved?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the IMA regarding food waste?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the I, the IMA regarding Rash, Rash, Rash?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Is, that's the Rochester Area School Health Plan, right, the RASH? Okay, because it's on here twice, alrighty. May I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education authorizes a superintendent of schools or his, doesn't need to execute the contract between Dr. Robert Tuft and the district for the 2025, 2026 school year?
So moved. Second.
Did you get that? It was like a. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves a 2025, 2026 school physician contract?
So moved.
Okay. Yeah, and his word different. Sorry, I apologize. Alright. May I, may I please have a motion in a second that the Board approves a recommended textbook?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I please, so, may I please have a motion in a second that the policies be approved as presented?
So the two for first read, I'll have Dr. Driffl speak to the first, which is the maximum temperature. And then in Ms. Perez's absence, I will speak to the cell phone policy for first read. So Dr. Driffl, do you want to talk a little bit about this one?
So this first read policy stems from the new legislation regarding maximum temperatures in classrooms. So the two thresholds to keep in mind are 88 degrees and 82 degrees. 82 degrees, you need to make some mitigation efforts. So close the shades, get a fan, portal air conditioning, turn off the lights, things like that. At 88 degrees, as measured, three feet off the ground in the middle of the room, the district has to take steps where practical to remove students from that learning environment. So it's pretty open-ended. It's language that just comes right from the legislation itself. It has to be, the policy has to be in effect by September 1st. So at our next meeting, we'll adopt that policy.
And the second we have for first read for the community is the use of internet-enabled devices during the school day. So that is the governor's regulation around the cell phone policy. And I'll just share briefly the overview for that policy. At the elementary level, student personal electronic devices may not be brought to school. This includes the school bus. At the middle school level, grades six through eight, student personal electronic devices must be powered off and stored in their pouches for the entire school day. And at the high school level, grades nine through 12, student personal electronic devices must be powered off and also stored in their pouches throughout the day. I think that the overall messaging around this new policy is to make sure that we're mitigating the distractions that our students have been experiencing in our learning environments. And so this policy will help us to support and disrupt the distractions because we've realized and some of the research and the rationale from the governor suggests that there has been an impact on mental health. There have been increased disciplinary issues and reduced engagement for our students in our schools. So that is a policy that's also going up for first read tonight. And we have to have this policy presented to you, the board and the community, and it has to be in place by the beginning of August for us to be able to implement this regulation for the start of the school year. Are there any questions about either of those two policies that we're presenting for first read tonight?
I, I, I do have a question regarding the, I guess for parents that want to know who use the phone to maybe contact their kids regarding like pickup or what does the district have in place to, for our system to not also be over flooded with a whole bunch of calls? Whether there's a way for parents to communicate or is there something that the district is implementing?
Yes, there is. So there is going to be a communication that's going to be shared with families this week. Part of the details that we're still working on. So at the high school level, grades nine through 12, email will be an option for our students to be able to communicate with their families. We're still working on some of the kinks at the middle school level because there's fishing. And we want to make sure that we're protecting our most vulnerable students at the middle school level, grade six through eight. So we don't necessarily want to have that two-way communication for our students at that level because people could be sending things into our students, grade six through eight. And we want to make sure that we're safeguarding all of those communications. We have already had, at the high school level, the functionality for our students to communicate via email. So we're looking at a couple of different options. So I've been working very closely with Dr. Maloney and the technology and Stephanie Marsh, our new director for student accountability, data and technology, to identify that method so that we can maintain some access for students to be able to communicate with their families. The other thing that we talked about as part of the cell phone policy advisory committee was thinking about some of the pre-planning and things like that that families may need to start doing to support some of that communication and some of the things that we know that we try to communicate with our children on the fly with and about. So it may involve some of those plans in advance, some of those discussions. And really, we know that every school building has a phone, whether at the middle school level in each one of the houses. If there's an emergency, parents can always call that house administrator and students can go there and also reach their families. So we can use that as one of the options also. So we're still kind of trying to iron out all of the kinks, but we should have a very clean and clear definitive plan as we get ready to implement come September. Great question.
Board members, anyone else have any question? So we're going to second read now? So I can do the motion?
Yes.
Okay, can I have, at least have a motion in a second that the policies be approved as presented? So moved.
Second.
Board members, any questions or comments? Did, were there any comments?
Nothing came in from the community. And the policies that we are approving tonight is Title I, which is family engagement, and Title IX. So both of those policies we presented, I think, at the July, excuse me, June, June board meeting. And so now we're at a point where we're ready to approve.
All, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We have no community comments? And we uncommunicate. I've run out of paper. President's remarks.
May I, please have a motion in a second? We did that one, yes. Okay. So the NISBA Annual Convention and Education Expo is October 23rd through the 25th in New York City. Registration is open on August 12th, 2025. Any? And then do I read about the committees?
So just for Scott's knowledge, so Scott, just so you know, the NISBA conference, a couple of people try to go from the board every year. It's a really great opportunity to learn a lot. Like usually, there's a guest speaker or keynote speaker, and then there's multiple sessions and it's all of New York State coming together, board members from across the state. So it's just a really great opportunity to kind of just learn more and tap into different things and bring things back to the district to share what you learned, so.
I just, can I say more on that?
Yes.
So Scott, it's a, it's a period of two, three days, and there are various presentations all throughout the day. And what usually happens is that we get together and we decide, okay, what we're interested in. Usually you show up for the ones you're interested in, but if more than, more than one of us shows up for something, we try and switch it out just so that we get the most out of it. And then we come back and we talk about what we learned and what we would like to share and bring back to the community. It's a really wonderful learning experience for a board member because you get to see what's happening in other school districts and what other boards are doing and if it's working or not working. And then there are a whole bunch of vendors as well, right? Sometimes you get free stuff like pencils and stuff, like if, if you're into that.
You're lucky you get more than just.
Note pads, magnets, yeah, like, you know. Yeah, so it's, it's not necessary to go every year, but it's a really good opportunity just to help broaden your mind. I know I learned a lot the first time I went, yeah, it was, it was really good, yeah.
I think the other thing is if you are interested in attending, let Lynn know because she can support with the registration and all of the details so that you're able to, you know, secure your space and attendance as well as your lodging information.
You both went last year, right, to the one in New York City?
Yeah.
Right? And Nicole, why, I think, right?
Yes.
It was good.
Usually they don't do New York two years in a row, I don't think, do they?
Yeah, I was surprised when they said it would be New York again this year.
Because the last time they did it was Buffalo. That's what I thought it was going to be Buffalo.
I was hoping it was going to be closer to home.
Yeah, the last time I was in New York was my, it was my first year and I was like, it was COVID was still a little hot, so.
Yeah, I'm not going to a big city.
Like any of us want.
So do I just announce our committees? Okay. So our Monroe County School Board Association Committee is executive committee, the information exchange, the district operations, and legislative. The New York State School Board Association Committee is legislative representative. And then the subcommittee is the Board of Education Orientation and Policy. Community committees audit physically.
Community committees audit physical health and safety and sustainability. And then the district liaison, non-public school liaison, PAB, PTA, PTO, PTSA, and boosters. And that brings us to unfinished business.
So I can explain, I can explain the committees?
Sorry.
So
I'm just rushing through.
We would let them know, like what committees, I told Scott the other day, what committees we're interested in, and then you guys would decide what committees we'll be a part of. Same thing with the district liaisons. So the non-public school liaison and then the different PTAs, PTOs. And then Board President is on the PAB committee. So you, that is all you.
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
And Lynn usually sends out a calendar with all, and the Monroe County sends out a calendar, like last year I consolidated and said, I don't know if you remember, I sent out like, these are when all of exec meetings are legislative, whatever, so that people could look at their calendars, see if it would align where they could actually attend them to. So that helps.
There, there's no unfinished business? Any new business? Can I have a motion, a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:29 PM?
So moved.
It's like, no one's going to second? You guys want to stay? Any questions or comments, right? No? Okay, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Ooh.